The Planning Commission for Wheat Ridge, April 2nd, is called to order. May I have a roll call of the members?
Ann Brinkman.
President.
Jim Chilvers.
President.
Mark Dietrich is not here. John Dwyer.
Here.
Henry Hollander.
Here.
Vic Matthews.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
And Steve Timms.
Here.
May we have the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, founded on principles of liberty and justice for all.
May I have approval of the order of tonight's agenda?
Madam Chairman, I have one thing I would like to add, and that is, under other items, after the election of officers, I do have a distribution for the upcoming study session with City Council, so you will be getting your packet ahead of time for that for Monday night.
Thank you. Anything else?
Well, things -- we have kind of a new situation tonight. We've got someone who is hearing impaired, and so we do have an interpreter who is going to help us with the meeting.
Thank you. Any other changes to the agenda? May I have approval?
Madam Chair, I move for approval of the order of the agenda.
May I have a second? Please vote.
The motion passes 7-0.
May I have approval of the minutes of March 19th, 2009? Take a minute.
I move for approval of the minutes of the March 19th meeting.
May I have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
And that motion passes with Commissioners Dwyer and Brinkman abstaining.
Thank you. Now is the time for the public forum. The public forum is a time for any person to speak on a subject not appearing on the agenda. There is nobody signed up. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on something not on the agenda? Okay. We'll move on to the public hearing. Case number MS-09-01, an application filed by George and Alan Williams for approval of a two-lot minor subdivision plat for property zoned Agricultural 1, A1, and located at 4593 Parfett Street.
Ms. Lozari is passing out a condition to the approval that was not included with the staff report, so I can give you a minute to look over that, and then I'll talk about that later in the presentation. Tonight, we are here for the hearing of case MS-09-01, Williams, at 4593 Parfett Street. A request for a minor two-lot subdivision. All notification and posting requirements have been met, therefore there is jurisdiction to hear this case. The purpose for this subdivision is for the purchase of Lot 2 of the subdivision by the City of Wheat Ridge in order to expand their Public Works facilities. The original request was accompanied by a request to rezonate Lot 2 from A1 to PF, which stands for Public Facilities. The request for the rezoning was withdrawn as the sale of Lot 2 was dependent only on the subdivision and not the request for rezoning. However, rezoning requests and a lot consolidation plat will follow in the future. The property on which the action is being requested is Zoned A1. The A1 Zone District was established to provide a high-quality, safe, quiet, and stable residential estate living. Single-family residential agricultural uses and activities, governmental, public buildings, and semi-public buildings are all allowed uses in the Zoned District. The property is approximately 4.32 acres in size and has a single-family home on it with several outbuildings, which support the agricultural uses on the lot. Here is a slide of the property. The lot is a relatively flat lot with two irrigation ditches that traverse the property. One follows the southern property line. The other, as you can see in this aerial photograph, cuts across the property from the southeast side -- or, excuse me, from the southwest side to the northeast, and then once it gets to the north property line, it follows the north property line. The area to the west of the irrigation ditch is primarily unused while the portion of the property on the east side of the irrigation ditch is used for -- primarily for agricultural uses, and in more recent years, as for growing pumpkins. And as you can also see, that West 46th, over here on the west side of the property, dead ends into what will become Lot 2, which we will see here in just a few moments. The surrounding area has a large mix of Zoned Districts, but primarily A1. Again, as I stated, the property is Zoned A1, as you can see to the north, on the southwest side, and then again over on the east side, there's A1 zoning. There is also pockets of R2 zoning to the west, to the south, and to the southeast. The Public Works facility is not shown correctly on this map, but it is Zoned PF. And then further to the south, along 44th, which is not shown on the zoning map, some of the properties are Zoned C1, as you can see some of those properties are Zoned C1. This is the plat that has been submitted for the subdivision. This will be the front parcel that has frontage along Parfett Street. It will be about 2.84 acres, and then the second lot will be on the western edge. Right here is where 46th dead ends into that lot, and let's see. The subdivision requirements are, as stated above, the A1 subdivision regulations are regarded as the minimum requirements for protection of public health, safety, and welfare. The minimum lot size for an A1 lot is one acre. The minimum lot width is 140 feet, and the maximum building coverage is 25 percent, along with setbacks of -- the front setback being 30 feet, and the side and rear property lines -- side and rear setbacks being 15 feet. Utility easements in a typical subdivision, easements for utilities must be established along the perimeter of each lot. The easements required are 10 feet on the rear and front property lines and 5 feet along the side property lines. And then there's a lot of time -- typically, there is also a right-of-way dedication required if the public improvements to streets have not been fully constructed or doesn't meet the city standards in terms of what would be required if they were to be constructed in the future. Most commonly, curb, gutter, and sidewalk are what is required for dedications, but no -- Public Works has the -- Public Works Department has the discretion to waive the requirements to dedicate right-of-way based on the surrounding conditions. In this case, no dedication of right-of-way is required, as the amount of right-of-way in place, which is 55 feet, is to the city standards and is enough to construct improvements to the street if it were to be ever be constructed. There is no curb, gutter, or sidewalk on either side of Parfett Street from 44th all the way up to I-70, and because of that, or -- and it will likely that they will never be constructed, and that is one of the reasons why the dedication requirements have been waived with this subdivision. For Lot 1, there, like as I stated before, there is an existing single-family home with several outbuildings. As a result of the subdivision, Lot 1 will be 2.84 acres, or 123,968 square feet in size. The width will be 254 feet. This -- let's see, the size, again, I said, will be 2.84 acres. And then the maximum building coverage of 25 percent is well below that of 2.5 percent lot coverage. With this, the standard utility easements were also established. For Lot 2, which is the newly created lot, the lot will be 1.49 acres, which is, again, larger than the one acre required. It's a -- it's 254 feet wide, and the easements have also been in place -- have been placed on this lot with the subdivision request. No buildings are proposed for Lot 2, and therefore, there's no setbacks that need to be set right now, but when buildings are constructed, they will have to follow the A1 -- set A1 development standards for setbacks when they are constructed. And here is just kind of a closer-up of the lot with the red line showing where the property will be subdivided. You can see it's about -- the rear 1/3 of the property will be back, will be created for Lot 2. The request for the subdivision was put on referral. Public Works had no comments pertaining to the form -- or had minor comments pertaining to the form and content of the plat, but they have since been addressed and corrected. Excel Energy has no conflict with the subdivision. They did advise the applicants that there is a 115 kilovolt overhead power line, and that if Lot 1 was to ever be developed into something more intensive, that would probably be a discussion at that time. Valley Water currently serves -- or is currently -- is not serving either of the properties. It is served by Well Water. At the time when buildings are constructed, a water line will have to be extended to the -- to Lot 2 in order to properly serve the property. And Arvada Fire had comments that when buildings are constructed on the lots, the existing valley water line will have to be extended, and fire hydrants will have to be placed along that line in order for fire protection. In addition, access lanes will also have to be provided for fire apparatuses as required by the International Fire Code. Staff has concluded that based on the A1 Zone District development standards, all requirements for the subdivision in an A1 Zone District have been met, and as such, recommend approval for case MS-09-01, Williams, for the following reasons. All development standards for the A1 Zone District have been met. All requirements of the subdivision regulations have been met. All required utility easements have been provided, and all utility companies have the ability to serve the property. With the following condition that I did hand out, which it has come to the attention of city staff, that George Williams, one of the applicants for the subdivision, recently was deceased. Based on conversations with the city attorney, the following condition should be included in the motion if the motion for approval is made, and that is, that the plat shall be signed by the owners following the probate of George Williams' estate. And that concludes the presentation. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions of staff?
I have a little things that I find interesting about this.
Use your mic.
I was under the impression, as we all know, that right-of-way -- first of all, what's the classification of Parfett Street within the --
I would defer that to Tim Peranto, our Public Works Director.
It's a minor collector.
So it's a minor collector, and that makes the minimum under the standards 60 feet right-of-way?
No, it could be 50 feet in this location.
And I had been led to believe that the standard for construction of public improvements was not discretionary and required a variance to waive the construction of the public improvements on the site.
I can answer that as well. The public improvements are required if they were expected to be constructed, and in this particular location, we have no curb and gutter along Parfett Street. Additionally, there is grade issues on Parfett Street, so that it would prohibit a spot construction of curb and gutter at this particular property. The water wouldn't be able to drain anywhere.
But the -- it doesn't -- as a process question, it does not require a variance?
I don't believe so.
And then the second -- and question is, I find it unusual, and I'm a little unclear under our standards, but with the legal access to Lot 2 is off of 46th Avenue, is that -- that's a tract, it looks like, on the plat, right?
Yes.
And do we normally terminate public roadways in dead ends without cul-de-sacs under the subdivision standards? Do you want to answer that, Tim?
I can answer that as well. It's all case-specific, and in this particular case, there is only one lot that extends beyond an existing street intersection. Secondly, it is on -- it's of record that this access will likely never be used, that the property will be included in the city's Public Works facility property, and access will all be through 45th, the current accesses to the Public Works facility.
Is that going to be resolved in the next plat? Is that -- here, there's another plat likely to --
Right now, there, on the most current plat, which was all included, there's a cross-access easement right now that extends across Lot 2, the subdivision, and the Public Works facility, which will grant Public Works access to that northern lot without having to have it drawn access off of 46th.
I guess I agree with all those conclusions, but I would point out that one of the problems that we have in any regulatory environment is one, it's not uniformly determined how to approach a question, and when there's no standard by which, in this city, by which we decide which streets public improvements are and aren't required. And the appearance that it's different for one person and another is problematic to me at this particular point in time. And I would suggest that staff ought to look at developing a standard under which they decide where it is appropriate to ask for public improvements and where it's not. And then I stop talking now.
Is there going to be a fence between the new city property and the subdivision?
There will be. Once the city -- once the purchase is complete of -- or the subdivision is complete, the city will purchase Lot 2 from the property owners, and at that time, a fence will be constructed on the lot, and that's -- right now, it'll just be a lot with a fence around it until city funds are sufficient to expand the Public Works facilities.
And what will be there, a parking lot, or more buildings?
I think Tim would know the plans better than I do, but I think it's mainly going to be the administration building and some additional covered parking for Public Works and Parks vehicles, correct?
I did bring a copy of the master plan. If the Commissioner would like to take a look at that, but it would point out exactly what's being planned.
Tim, did you want to see that?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
I have a question while we're waiting for Tim to -- oh, he's got it right there. Never mind.
Probably --
Where's the camera?
-- see it as well as most of the audience and camera. The property currently comes to a line, and we see these two dashes. This is the property that's proposed for acquisition from the Williamses. There would be employee parking on the eastern portion of the property, and there would be some enclosed parking for equipment that would be along the western northerly side of the property. This is the master plan that was approved several years ago at City Council.
Is that permeable or impermeable? Is that concrete?
It's all being paved. The city will follow some regulations concerning retention and make sure we can get here water quality.
So while you have that up, I have a question. The ditch, when you purchase the property, are you going to have ditch rights? Is that an active ditch, water?
It is an active ditch. The city is not going to acquire any of the ditch rights.
Okay.
The Williamses will retain their ditch rights. The ditch that runs now along the southern portion will be placed in pipe
Okay.
-- with the ditch company and Mr. Williams' approval, so that it will not interrupt the ditch flow for the agricultural users.
Okay. And if I recall, that's the only place that it crosses right at that point, essentially? Okay.
Right now, it comes across something like that.
Okay. Does anybody else have any?
Is that a building, that brown on the left?
Here?
Yeah.
These are -- this covered storage
Okay.
-- for equipment.
So the ditch could go under that?
Yes.
Any other questions of staff? John?
Two questions. Adam, one, your -- the comments from Arvada Fire, they say when buildings are constructed --
Correct.
Aren't there already buildings on?
Not on Lot 2, there's not.
So these only apply to Lot 2?
Right.
Okay. And then the second thing is, what happened -- we're not making any provision for what happens if the city decides to get rid of Lot 2 and do something else with it as far as access to it, and the city has had land before and gotten rid of it, and so I'd be a little bit concerned that we're not making any kind of provision for access to that lot at some time in the future that will allow the city, if they want to get rid of it, to do so and still have sufficient access to the property.
Okay. Yeah, and I think at that time, if it was to be sold, there could be some sort of right-of-way put in place by Public Works, or, I mean, maybe that's a consideration for an additional condition for approval, if that would be the case.
Yeah, because there wouldn't be any reason necessarily for the city to do that when they decided to get rid of that land. It seems to me that's something that we should make provision for now, rather than have to go through some sort of a process later on, certainly.
So you're thinking about adding another condition?
I am.
Okay.
Except wouldn't access be from 46th?
Yes.
Isn't that -- doesn't that -- I took that to be legally existing. There exists legal access to this lot on 46th Avenue. Does there not?
There is a small one-foot access -- or a small one-foot strip of land that is at the end of the road, that is owned by the City of Wheat Ridge, which would give access to this -- which would give access to the site if need to be, but right now, that is just going to be gated off, and it's going to be used for emergency access only, and then the cross-access easement exists between that lot and then the Public Works facilities.
I'm actually -- there's -- the 46th Avenue
Right.
-- right-of-way itself
Right.
-- does reach this property, or is there's a one-foot strip that -- that tract in the middle is a legal boundary?
There is. Let's see if I can bring it.
It says one-foot tract A.
That one-foot tract is owned by the city, so...
The city should -- then I would think that the appropriate condition was that the city should dedicate that as right-of-way now, so that -- because otherwise, I don't think we have legal access to this site in terms of -- the city should dedicate that one-foot strip to itself, or whatever it has to do. Should become public right-of-way, because otherwise, this lot legally doesn't exist, I don't think. Am I missing -- am I wrong on this?
I don't --
The cross-access easement doesn't justify a legal lot, but I had -- I mean, it's a simple fix, but I think you have to give the -- extend the right-of-way to the property line, or you haven't created a legal lot under the subdivision laws of the state, I think.
I think because it has -- I mean...
I think it's simple, but I think I'm wrong.
You certainly can include, you know, we can include that one foot
Yeah.
-- as part of -- the problem we have right now, Commission, is that the owners of the property are subdividing, and the city owns this one-foot, what I call a spite strip
Right.
-- which provides control over what might happen to the property.
So you put a spite strip in your own way, and now you -- and if they dedicate it, then they have to take the plat to council, because they've now have right-of-way dedication?
They don't, because they don't own it. They can't dedicate something they don't own. The city owns the one foot. So by separate action, that would...
I actually don't think this plat's legal without. I think you have an illegal lot, though. Well, it means a thing.
Because there is no public access to it.
Because there's no legal access.
Has no legal access to it, if that's not dedicated.
There's got to be a way out of the box, but...
Right.
I mean, I understand at this point, it's a rhetorical question, because access is going to be from Public Works, but the city has sold land in the past that it owned, and that could happen again in this case, and if you don't dedicate, then that plat can't be sold.
Can we kind of offer a suggestion that there be a condition that, at such times this property might be sold by the city, that the city shall dedicate the one-foot strip for right-of-way?
But...
And then we would be precluded from ever selling this property unless we provided access to 46th.
But you're not addressing Davis's concern that this is not a legal
Legal plot.
A legal plot. This is not
Legal subdivision.
A legal subdivision.
I think I'm right.
I don't see the spikes on here.
It's too small to see.
Yeah, exactly. It's less than one pike of wide in this.
No, this is...
Have you ever looked up a spite?
Can we put the condition -- can we just recommend that there be a condition of the concurrent transfer, the sliver, to right-of-way? There's got to be a legal mechanism to do that, right?
Yes, and typically, we don't dedicate to ourselves right-of-way, so that's the issue. I guess we weren't, and I'd have to ask our attorney for his legal interpretation, but...
I guarantee you, if I owned the other side of that sliver, I wouldn't be getting the latitude you're giving me. I would be building a cul-de-sac in a four-mile street.
Right.
But I think it's -- I do think it's a problem.
Yeah, and that's really the point here. I just -- I don't want there to be any idea or perception that the city is getting some kind of special treatment because it's the city's land, and it's a city process, which, again, is the same question Davis had at the beginning about dedication for easements. And there should be some sort of an easy way, I would think, to get around this, so that, you know, you can have public access. It's a legal plot. Yes, Steve?
I just have a quick comment or question. Is when the city acquires the title to this Lot 2, are they going to do a consolidation plat to the property to the south and basically turn all that into one lot? Because if they do, then the access issue would be resolved. Right, and that is one of the things they do, plan on coming in for a consolidation plat to consolidate it with the existing Public Works facility, which would alleviate that issue.
Would we make that the condition that, I mean, instead of...
I would just make the hair stand up on my head to say that it's possible to walk in, that anybody should be able to walk into this hearing and get permission on the promise that later they were going to fix the access. I cannot, for the life of me, imagine after a career of doing this, that you could -- anybody with a straight face would walk in and say, "I'll fix the access later" to any city that I know of, and get away with it. I mean, it's just unimaginable to me that that works.
Adam?
You know, as Tim stated, that there -- I mean, there is that one-foot tract of land which, you know, could be dedicated. Could be dedicated as a condition of whoever comes in, and if it would be to be sold by the city, that that sliver land would be dedicated for right-of-way to make that lot connect to public right-of-way. And then again, also, I mean, there is that they will be -- that doesn't exactly solve the issue right now, but they will be coming in with consolidation plat at a later time, which in that case would not require the lot to be connected to. case, would not require the lot to be connected to West Forty-S sixth Avenue.
Mr. Pronto.
Because of, because of the current situation with the demise of Mr. Williams, it's going to be sometime before this plat is actually signed and recorded, and so in that time period, the city could dedicate that one-foot strip, so that could be the condition, is that this plat not be recorded until such time as the one-foot is dedicated. We know it's going to take a while to get through probate, so we'll have plenty of time to process that dedication.
I think, I think that's all it takes.
Is staff good with that?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you, Adam.
Thank you.
Do we have the applicant? Meredith?
We do have the applicant. I'm not sure if he wants to speak or add anything.
Voice in.
Oh, sure, please.
So when you come to the podium, give your name, spell your last name, and please give your address.
Okay. My name's Al Williams, and my address that I live at right now is 5192 Braun. We moved there, my dad got sick four years ago, oh, almost six years ago, then he passed on, and I promised him that I would try to keep most of the land, and my brother and his wife decided they wanted to sell it, so, and he passed on this last Sunday.
I'm sorry.
So-
We didn't want to sell it.
I didn't want to sell it. My brother wanted to sell the whole thing. And we worked out a deal with Tim about the back half. The city, for one year, has got an option, if I decide to sell it, or have to, for monetary or something, the city's got the right, the first rights on the first half, and they've already bid on it. And I don't know, I thought if they went back up for sale from the city, that I could get first rights on it, since, you know, what we worked out before. I don't, you know, I haven't really sat down and talked to Tim about it, you know? Now, because I'm going to be the sole owner, me and my 20-year-old son.
Does anybody have any questions of the applicant? Thank you, thank you for coming in. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this? And is there anybody signed up?
Yes, there's a Sarah Marcus-Friederson.
Sarah Marcus, I'm sorry. There was somebody signed up to speak. Is there anybody in the audience-
Larry Welsham?
I'm here, but I'm not going to speak.
You don't want to speak, okay.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to speak to this? Okay. I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion or a discussion. I would ask for a motion, actually, and then we can discuss. John?
I'll move.
Oh.
If you go for it.
Okay, I, I brought it up, I should have to do it. Madam Chair, I move to approve case number MS-0901, a request for approval of a two-lot minor subdivision plat for property at 4593 Parfett Street for the following reasons. One, all development standards of the A1 Zone District have been met. Two, all requirements of the subdivision regulations have been met. Three, all required utility easements have been provided, with the following two conditions. One, the plat shall be signed by the appropriate owners following probate of George Williams' estate. Two, plat shall not be recorded until the west end of the plat is dedicated to the city for right-of-way.
John, I would clarify that the one, the one-foot strip-
The one-foot strip, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
The one-foot-
Connecting Forty-S sixth Avenue.
Connecting Forty-S sixth Avenue to the-
Lot 2.
-property should be dedicated to the city.
May I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Vote, please.
And the motion passes seven-zero.
So that ends the public hearing. Thank you very much. You can leave, or you can stay for the remainder of the other items, which is election of officers and distribution of packet for the study session. Do we have the little pieces of paper?
We do.
Oh, yay.
And I know you're all anxious for this. We did postpone from the last meeting, so we had some more attendance.
Good defense to you.
I have in my hand the bylaws of the Planning Commission, and how it is stated is that the chairman shall be elected on a rotating basis and shall not exceed himself or herself, and that it does have to be held by secret ballot without nomination. So I guess we'll do the chair first, so we will pass out-
So one thing, you should explain what the chair can and cannot do. So the chair cannot give a motion?
That's right.
The chair cannot speak until everybody else has spoken, unless it's me and I-
Is that in the, I mean, I just-
That is in the-
Is that actually in the bylaws?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe that the piece about the motion is in the bylaws. That's true. They can participate in the discussion, and of course, vote, which is a little bit different than the mayor and city council.
The chair can second a motion, though, can't they?
No.
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 Now, the vice chair doesn't have any of those restrictions unless they're the presiding officer.
So be careful what you wish for, if you want this hallowed position.
So, with that-
The pay, by the way.
Is great.
Phenomenal.
And the glamour.
Phenomenal.
The glamour is-
You get what you pay for, right?
So, Adam, do you mind passing those out? I would like everybody to write down their nomination for the chairman position. Fold up your paper, it is supposed to be a blind vote, and then we'll collect those, and we'll do it until we get somebody. That's how it's going to be.
Meeny, meeny, miny, moe.
That's a good catch on that strip. I didn't see that strip. Did you see that? Did you realize that it was cut off from that right-of-way?
I knew that they didn't have an access. I didn't know how big it was, but I figured it was bigger than that, but I knew they didn't have access.
Well, they had the, I saw the corridor, I didn't see the, that's, what did he, was his term? What was his term?
Spite strip.
Spite strip, yeah.
You ever heard of a spite?
Yeah, I have, but it wasn't sticking. We, we use them on utility easements all the time.
I don't care. I'll, I'll-
Have you ever looked at a spite building? Go on to Wikipedia and search for spite, a spite strip, and they have two-foot-wide buildings that they built. They're, they're all over the East Coast.
Quite honestly, I know we're not supposed to talk about the merits of the case, but I think part of the reason that was there was as a comfort level for the neighbors, so that they didn't think the street was going to go through with the Public Works. But I think the solution that you came up with was great. Okay.
Davis Reinhardt, one. Dick Matthews, one. Could do the Survivor's style. Davis Reinhardt, two. Not good. Dick Matthews, two.
Ooh.
Did you- Dick Matthews, three.
There he is.
Davis Reinhardt, three. And Commissioner voted off. Reinhardt, four.
Davis is the new chairman, Davis Reinhardt.
Come hither, young man.
Are you going to have to start now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
New fearless leader.
Have all your issues been settled, that you can do this now?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay, so now it will be the vice chairman. Are we supposed to do the same thing? Yeah, same manner. Do you mind, Adam?
Not at all.
My assistant?
So do I just take your seat for adjournment?
Sure.
Please swap the signs.
Sure. I don't think there, there are no more voting matters.
No, you want the vice chair elected before you adjourn.
Except for adjournment. This is being legal, old swan.
Was it really? Seems like dog years ago.
Are there any restrictions on who you vote for vice chair? I mean, can the vice chair succeed themselves?
I believe, let's see what they say. I believe so.
Don't you dare, Henry.
Oh, the, the previous chair can be the vice chair?
I don't see a restriction. I'm, I'm quickly glancing.
She's required to respond honestly.
I am. I don't see that there's a restriction.
It's much easier to write the word Henry than it is to write the word Ann.
But, you know, I think probably to mix it up, you know?
You're tired of me.
Da, 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 da. Okay.
It's bright over here. It would be better in the dark in the morning.
All right. Henry Hollander, one.
Oh, Dean.
John Dwyer, one. John Dwyer, two. Dick Matthews, one. Jim Shilvers, one. Dick Matthews, two. Dwyer, two. Henry, two. Jim, one. And Dick Matthews, three.
Okay, Dick.
I don't think you can succeed yourself.
Well, it doesn't say you can't, which is the language I was looking for.
I thought they said that last year.
Everybody thought you did such an ass hitting God when you stood in the last year. What was it, three or four times? You know, you ran a strong meeting.
Selected in the same manner as chairman. Yeah, it does not say you cannot succeed yourself.
They said that last year.
So, unless we hear differently, I have meet with Mr. Dahl tomorrow, unless we hear differently.
So we have now notes for the study session?
Pardon me? Yeah, I, actually, it's just, as you're probably aware, there is a joint City Council Planning Commission study session coming up on April 6th, which is Monday, and so this is the packet. I think that Kathy may have emailed it to you as well, but we're not quite sure if everybody's receiving their emails.
Yeah, I, I got-
You got yours. So anyway, here's a hard copy. The items of discussion, I believe, are the, about the comprehensive plan. There are several things. Comprehensive plan, maybe CDBG issues, fund, funding issues. We did have a, a second public meeting of, for the comprehensive plan. It's a sign. Last, last Wednesday night, and we had about, I want to say 30 to 35 folks in attendance. Adam, did you, there was a mapping exercise that went well. They started defining more of the areas on the actual map, so, anyway, I'm sure that there will be some discussion on that on Monday night.
Meredith, I just have a, just an off-the-wall question.
Sure.
Those really beautiful houses, are we still on TV?
I don't think so.
Should we, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn, though.
I think we are, they're moving cameras around.
Um, I, what's the wording? I haven't made a motion. I make a motion to adjourn.
I move.
I move. I move.
Second.
And the motion passes seven-zero. Except for Commissioner Reinhardt. Well, you vote in a different place now, and-
We'll have to figure out-
And Commissioner Brinkman's sign fell off.
It's a sign.
It's a sign.
Oh, just, I'm Dean now? That's not good.
It's unanimous.
I became Gokie? I'll have to take that up with him.
In the mayor's spot, that might have been what he did, Davis.
I'll bet that was it.
Aspirations.
You have to vote on that far one.
Oh.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I see what happened.
But I was certain you didn't vote no, so I counted you a yes.
I never voted not to adjourn. filibuster.
Has anybody?
I, I think so. I don't, I wonder if someone could knock on Jesse's door and just-
Why, are you going to say something?
Are we done? We're done? Audio down?